Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person. Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Brier.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman that we excuse council member Person. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, we have two proclamations to start off with. Jason?
Okay, the first is the Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including Renton, Washington, and the mission of Renton Community Services Department is to improve the quality of life to our diverse community by providing safe and beautiful parks, a healthy and expanding urban forest, and high-quality, community-focused recreational experiences; and whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of community and region; and whereas recreation enhances quality of life, helps people live happier and longer, develops skills and positive self-image in children and youth, develops creativity and builds healthy bodies and positive lifestyles; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas recreation participation builds family unity, strengthens volunteer and community development, and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity; and whereas our parks, open space, and trails ensure ecological sustainability, provide space to enjoy nature, help maintain clean air and water, protect groundwater, provide vegetation buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim July 2014 to be Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to enjoy and recognize the many benefits of the City of Renton, parks and recreation facilities and programs, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 23rd day of June 2014. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman. Council adopt this proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to present this to Sonia Maylander as our Community Relations and Event Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and guests. This is Sonia Maylander, Community Services Department, and on behalf of our department and our seven divisions: Recreation, Parks and Golf Course, Parks Planning and Natural Resources, Facilities, Human Services, Renton History Museum, and Neighborhoods, Resources, and Events Division, thank you for honoring the month of July as Park and Recreation Month and helping to give awareness to the national campaign "Out Is In." We are proud to serve the city and our greater Renton community by helping to provide relevant, interesting, inclusive, and timely programming and services for our citizens and for being the best stewards possible of public property. National Parks and Recreation Month has been celebrated since 1985, and we are continuing that tradition with this year's campaign "Out Is In." Today, 28 percent of adults are not spending any time outdoors recreating or participating in leisure activities. We'd like to help change that. We encourage the public to utilize a new, interactive calendar that provides 31 days of suggested outdoor activities throughout the City of Renton. On the calendar, each description is an actual link to the websites or city pages that provide additional details. The calendar "Out Is In" for the month of July is already posted to the city's recreation page, and will launch it tomorrow on Facebook. Any additional comments or questions?
Sounds great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sonia.
Okay, Jason, we have another proclamation.
This is Peace Run Day. Whereas from time immortals humanity has longed for peace and harmony among its diverse countries, cultures, and creeds; and whereas Canada and the United States share in peace and friendship the world's longest land border; and whereas the year 2014 marks the anniversary of the signing of the Treaty of Ghent, and thus 200 years of peace between the United States and Canada; and whereas the Sri Shamoy Oneness Home Peace Run honors the friendship between the United States and Canada by carrying the peace torch through towns and cities and across the border of these two nations; and whereas the Peace Run, visiting countless cities and towns, including the City of Renton, on its 50,000-mile journey through more than 100 nations around the globe in its quest to promote universal peace, will inspire our citizens; and whereas the auspicious undertaking is renewed dedication to humanity's loftiest goal of oneness and peace, both within our own communities and throughout the world at large. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 24, 2014, to be Peace Run Day in the City of Renton, and encourage all citizens to embrace the message of goodwill, benevolence, and compassion that the Peace Run promotes, and to strive for harmony at home, in our schools, in our communities, and in our nations. And witness whereof, I have herunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 23rd day of June 2014. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And it's my pleasure to present this to Rep. Ashley Young, who is the Regional Coordinator for this run.
Thank you very much, Mayor Law, and council members for having me here today. It's quite an honor and to be a part of the Sri Shamoy Oneness Home Peace Run. It's an amazing event that started in 1987 and has run pretty much every other year since then, and has traveled through over 140 countries, and every other year passes through about 100 or so countries, and with individuals running, carrying a torch every mile of the way, or kilometer of the way, depending on the country you happen to be in, and with very simple message that peace starts in the heart of each person, and everyone can make a positive difference in their community by becoming better themselves and by helping their families to be better, encouraging their friends to be better, and their greater world community at large. And we meet with countless schools and youth groups and children's groups, Boys and Girls Clubs, so we'll be meeting with the Boys and Girls Club here in Renton tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., among one of a number of other Boys and Girls Clubs we're meeting with here in the greater Puget Sound area. So, thank you very much, and does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Anybody want to run?
You're more than welcome to run.
Okay, well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
We have a special presentation.
Oh, wait a minute. I got two people looking at me like, what's going on here? We do have a special presentation. We're going to hear some positive news from Sonia Maylander about the upcoming 4th of July celebration, followed by a little warning from Ted Hickey on what happens if you light off fireworks here, so.
Good guy, bad guy show or something. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and guests. This year, we celebrate the 12th Annual 4th of July at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park. The event is free, and the park will open at 7:00 a.m. Again this year, stage entertainment and activities for kids will fill the day, culminating in a professional fireworks display from the Ivors Water Walk at 10:00 p.m. There's a great deal of information on the 4th of July event webpage at the city site rentonwa.gov, including an event map of the park, complete schedule of all activities and entertainment, parking information for the surrounding areas, street closure information for Lake Washington Boulevard North, and other event-related safety measures. I'd also like to take this opportunity to extend appreciation to our faithful and returning sponsors, who also believe in supporting family-oriented community events. Event cosponsor, The Landing, has been with us six years. Stage entertainment sponsor Sanctuary and the Reserve Apartments have also been with us six years. Kids' Own sponsor Coal Creek Family YMCA, five years, and new supporter this year, Renton Walmart. A 4th of July event survey will be available online at rentonwa.gov following the event, and we appreciate the public's input and comments. We wish everyone a safe and joyous Independence Day in Renton.
Thank you very much, Sonia.
Official welcome at 7:15 for our mayor and all of our council.
Okay.
Ted?
Here comes the bad guys.
Yeah. Good cop back off.
Mr. Mayor, council people, thanks for having us here tonight. We want to talk just a little tiny bit. I don't want to bore you with a whole lot of details, but I want to talk a little bit about the 2014 fireworks plan that we have. So, the ban is continuing this year as it has been. Could you move? There we go. So, we have been spending some time educating the public on the ban, the continuing ban. The data that we've been using is showing that the ban has been working. Our fire loss has been down significantly since we initiated the ban. I know there's still a whole lot of complaints that we have, people setting off fireworks, but we're continuing to go out and patrol the areas and get the message out. We have flyers that we hand out, and we'll be confiscating fireworks this year, and we have some police and fire teams that are going to be writing citations and violations for the thing. Could I have the next slide, please? So, we've got announcements on Channel 21. We're using the Community Center Reader Board, the Fire Station 13 Reader Board. We have press releases going out, and we have a front-page article in the Renton City News. The other thing that we're using, and we just discussed this this morning, was our Emergency Notification System, Code RED. We're going to be sending out a message on that on Saturday, I believe. We haven't really decided which day yet, but we're going to remind people of the ban that day. So, as I mentioned, we have police inspector teams. We have a couple of firefighter teams out in staff vehicles so that they don't see a big engine here, a big engine coming up, because what really happens is people hear us coming, and then they kind of run and hide for a while, then we're gone, and then they come back out, so. We will be confiscating fireworks this year. There will be civil violations written for legal fireworks that are legal in the state, even though they're illegal here, and criminal citations will be written for illegal fireworks that you get from the Indian reservations. So, with that being said, does anybody have any questions, comments? Any questions for Ted?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Ted, you mentioned there'll be firing police teams, that they'll be separate, right? They're not, you know, they won't be in tandem, working together?
We're going to be in tandem, working with police. We're going to have an inspector and a police officer together, one in the north and one in the south.
Is this the first year we're doing that?
We did it the first year of the ban, and it worked pretty well. So, we're trying it again this year. A little short staff, so we have two teams, but we also have a couple other teams that will be supplementing them, so.
Good, good to know.
We'll do the best we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ted? I just wanted to comment, was it 2008 the voters said they wanted the ban on fireworks? It was 2005 it was presented, and I think it started in 2006. 2006. And, you know, we're, we've been working all these years just trying to get compliance to follow the rules that the public, the majority of the public voted for, and a lot of people have complied with it. It's confusing, and so we understand how some families, they go into Fairwood, and they can buy them, and they don't understand that that's, those are still illegal. And so, it's very confusing, because unincorporated King County is still legal while, I mean, it's still legal while most cities have opted to ban them within the city limits. But it's, it's very confusing, but we're going to confiscate everything that we come into, so, you know, it's expensive when people are buying these things, but we're going to be uniform in terms of the confiscation, and in particular, people that are buying the very dangerous M80s, M90s, some of those other things off the reservations, they're going to be criminally cited, and it's, that's where you get the real serious injuries, so. I think a lot of people don't realize that there are literally no regulations for making them. They're all made illegally. So, we'll just do the best we can.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was going to share just a little more detail about that history. The, you know, I've over 20 years on the council now, and when we started out, fireworks were legal, and every year we had people come and petition that we might make them illegal, and it was always controversial, and then one year we had a house, a brand-new house burned down, and a city building also burned down, about 400,000 in damage at the time. And so, the council finally decided to make fireworks illegal the next year. The fireworks lobby basically came back and funded a campaign to try and overturn that ban, that ban, and the citizens voted two to one, actually, to leave the ban in place after that. So, at that point, it really transitioned from a council decision to community decision by two to one. There's, you know, I used to enjoy lighting fireworks with my kids, but I understand the community really doesn't want that done here in Renton, so. Anyways, that's a little more background for people.
And we really aren't the bad guys, so. Thank you.
Yeah, you're not, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Covington, now you can do the administrative report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, a couple of items we want to make sure folks know about. We are continuing our picnic season, so this Wednesday, the 25th, Rolling Hills Homeowners Association, which includes Rolling Hills Condo and Steeplechase Hill Condo Associations, will hold their annual combined neighborhood picnic from 5:30 to 7:30 at their common area, which is located at 1601 Rolling Hills Avenue Southeast. The Maplewood Estates Neighborhood will have their annual picnic Thursday, June 26, in their common area, which is located at Orcus and Southeast 2nd Street, also from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Residents are encouraged to bring their favorite side dish and attend their designated picnic to get to know their immediate and surrounding neighbors and meet city representatives. Those interested in pursuing a career in public safety are invited to attend the Public Safety Career Fair at the Renton Pavilion Event Center this Tuesday, that's tomorrow, June 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Numerous career opportunities are available, including police officers and deputy sheriffs, corrections officers and juvenile detention officers, firefighters, paramedics, and 911 dispatchers and communications officers. Many seminars will be held throughout the day, including seminars on the background and polygraph process, navigation of the public safety hiring maze, and interviewing tips from an expert. Free admission and two hours free parking located adjacent to the transit station are available. For more information, people can visit publicsafetytesting.com. And I would just add, for the council's information, we have been working with Public Safety Testing to try to make sure that we can get this word out in a number of venues, including those more diverse publications and activities, because it's really, this is a great opportunity to have this event right here in Renton, and we want to ensure that as many of our Renton residents as possible know about it. The last item I have is an invitation to come for the Green Day at the Renton Farmers Market, which will be Tuesday, July 8, Piazza Park, from 3 to 7. There'll be demonstrations and information from the King Conservation District, Seattle Tilt, Waste Management, Sustainable Renton, Shadow Habitat, Puget Sound Energy, and more. Green Day sponsor Yonker Nissan will have the 100% electric Nissan Leaf Car on display, and TV and radio host Cisco Morris will be there for all your gardening needs and questions. So, for more information, people can contact us at rentonfarmersmarket.com. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Ooh la la. I couldn't resist.
So, next is the audience comment period. We have one person signed up to address the council. Anna Pergamo. Is Anna here? If you could, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence, just for the record, and you have five minutes. Timer's next to the city clerk.
Anna Pergamo, P is in Peter, E R G A M O. I live in Renton. I believe last year, Mayor, you presented with the help of the city attorney a nuisance law to fine businesses with over a certain number of police calls. I know that the Home Run Tavern has met that quota. Myself and at least seven of my neighbors call the police every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night for fighting, yelling, and other disturbances. I come into this chamber every year, this time alone, without my neighbors. They say, "Don't go. It is pointless. Don't be so naive. The council needs the revenue from that bar." I am asking for your help. Three people have been killed in the parking lot by my house. Three people. This is the same council who, five minutes ago, was celebrating a peace run and going "out is the new in." I'm telling you, three people have been murdered feet from my house. I find it ironic and frankly disgusting. Has the nuisance law been applied to the Home Run Tavern?
No, it hasn't.
Why?
Go ahead and finish your...
That's it?
Oh, okay, and I'll give you a little bit of information on it. First of all, your neighbors are not correct that we're giving revenues off there, and that's why there isn't any, or that the establishment is still running. We do understand what you're going through. We monitor every call that comes out of there. We've put a ton of resources with answering calls and, on a proactive basis, going through and trying to get in there before things happen and to move the crowds out of there. The bulk of the calls are noise complaints, and they're very legitimate. Half of them, the people are gone after you've called before we get there, but the others, we roll in there, and they are noisy, and so we're addressing that. The ordinance that we have, and Mark, please correct me for, you know, with the fine detail, but the ordinance we have that we can enforce on requires serious offenses, and it has to be serious offenses during a given period of time, and they haven't met the threshold in terms of the serious offenses during that period of time. So, the city attorney is going to review that, and we're going to come back to the city council and maybe try to alter that, because that's been a big frustration for us. You're absolutely right. We've had three shootings there this year alone. We've had about eight since 2012. We've had over 200 calls for police services at that location since 2012. It clearly is our number-one problem establishment in the city, and we're the only city that I'm aware of that's even going so far out of the frustration that we have with the Liquor Control Board and the courts in dealing with the people that are involved, that has adopted an ordinance to go after the property owners, to say, "If you're going to rent the people that are going to create this environment, we're going to go after you." And so, I haven't been tested in court yet, but we're going to, we'll cite them. As soon as they cross that threshold, we're going to cite them, or we're going, we're going to go after them. So, we share in your frustration. I want you to know, we're out there all the time. We're trying to figure out what we can do to change the behavior and change the patterns. We've been very successful at doing it at a couple of other real hotspots, and, but home runs has been a very difficult one for us to address.
Mr. Mayor, can you describe a little bit more about the time period or the, that we're dealing with and why that's an issue?
Well, it's not an issue, other than the ordinance calls for X number of emergency call, or major calls for service within a six-month period, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I think you've struck the nail on the head. The issue with this particular ordinance, when we adopted it, you know, we were kind of blazing new territory, and so the idea is not to be overly restrictive, and you have to start somewhere. I think what it has shown is, particularly with the most recent murder that's occurred, that, you know, we need to go back and revise the ordinance and amend it so that, you know, it isn't as restrictive as we started with. The only way we'll truly know whether or not this ordinance will work is to get it to a point where we can take it into court, put it in front of a superior court judge to try to obtain the necessary order of abatement and injunctive relief that the city requires. That's the only way we'll know.
Did that answer your question, Terry?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So, my plan is to send the Liquor Control Board a letter again this week, hopefully tomorrow, telling them that this is a huge public safety concern for our residents, and it's for our police officers. We've had shots being fired in the parking lot with our police officers in the parking lot, so that, you know, it's the type of situation that we've got to figure out how we're going to get that under control. So, we're not leaving it open to raise money. You know, we are, we're out there all the time. We're doing everything we can, and we're plowing new ground to try to figure out what we can get, some headway beyond the courts and the other restrictions that we're running into.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I think I heard one of my colleagues, maybe Ms. Brier, point out that business like this just costs us money. And, I mean, I would just say to anybody running any business in town that no matter how vested they might think they are in the building or the business, if they're, if they cannot manage the business, or if you're a property owner and you cannot manage who you're renting to, we will not find that acceptable. It's great to have business, and I love so many of the businesses we have in this city, but when they start becoming a problem like this, and this kind of demand on the police department, we're subsidizing those as homeowners with our property taxes, and it's just not right, and it's certainly not right for the people that keep getting woken up, even the noise complaints, and then to find out that there's murders. I, I mean, don't, please, please don't take away the thought that we don't care. We do, so, don't give up on us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the consent agenda. We have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
And I move that the consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Brier, that council adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unfinished business. Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I know one council member's been working, Ms. Brier.
Isn't it nice that somebody works? Yes, the Finance Committee has several reports.
Somebody's got to carry the load.
Finance Committee report. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on June 23, 2014. Claim vouchers 329926 through 330284. Three wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling And payroll vouchers, including 725 direct deposits and 73 payroll checks totaling $1,655,493.93. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
Do the council concur with this Finance Committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And next is the Cedar River Gabian Repair. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the construction contract for the Cedar River Gabian Repair Project, as solicited through the Small Public Works Roster Process, to Janson Incorporated in the amount of $192,424.35. The committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the contract. The committee further recommends that staff be authorized to expend an amount not to exceed the estimated total project budget amount of $269,346.79. Upon project closeout, staff will return to council for a project update and final budget adjustment. The city's grant match fund has been identified to cover potential increased project expenditures. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
Do the council concur with the Finance Committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next report is the Consortium Fiber Project Agreement Number 64. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Consortium Fiber Project Agreement 64, which will provide a 288-count fiber optic cable for consortium member use as a segment, and the consortium's ring around the lake, go and install a 72-string count fiber optic backbone cable for the exclusive use of the City of Takwila from Southwest Grady Way, Interurban Avenue South, to South 120th Place and East Marginal Way and Seabee Data Center. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
Do the council concur with the committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next report is an update to the Local Government Investment Pool Resolution. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to update the resolution authorizing investment in the State of Washington's local government investment pool. The committee further recommends that...
The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this topic be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur with the Finance Committee report?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the final Finance Committee report is to convert a fire department position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the conversion of a fire lieutenant position to a fire captain position due to the level of authority required to manage the department's health and wellness programs. The additional cost is to be absorbed in the existing budget. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
So, Mr. Mayor, we were kind of interested in this change and asked that perhaps in six months, probably not to the Finance Committee, but to the Public Safety Committee, that we get an update on how this new position is working.
Okay.
Okay? With that, I'd like to move that the Finance Committee report be accepted.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution, and we have one ordinance for first and second reading.
All right, okay. The first is a resolution regarding the local government investment pool. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing investment of City of Renton monies in the local government investment pool.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move this resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next is an ordinance that's actually had first reading on June 16th, so it's second and final reading.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41180 of Chapter 1, Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations, and Chapter 5, Latecomers Agreements of Title IX, Public Ways and Property, of the Renton Municipal Code, updating regulations and adding definitions regarding utility of street latecomer agreements pursuant to a gross substitute House Bill 1717.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the ordinance be read?
Be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This, this coming Thursday at 3 o'clock, the Plan Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. Got two items on the agenda, comprehensive plan update and then docket 10 update. Also, this coming Monday, it's the 5th Monday, so we have no council meeting, and on July 4th, it's a city holiday.
And an executive session?
And, yeah, I was gonna do that.
Sorry.
And we'll have an executive session tonight, announced at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Committee will meet this Thursday, June 26th, at 4:00 p.m. There are two items on the agenda. The Boeing Company Lease Amendment Number 5, and the second item is emerging issues, including Northeast 31st Street Closure Resolution and Sound Transit Long Range Plan SEIS, Procedure for Renton's Review and Comment. I can tell you what I think, but... Maybe we don't want to know. You all know. I also want to say it was a great weekend with the beaches opening and Henry Moses Aquatic Center. Everything went well. As far as I know, there was only one save at the pool. Everything went smoothly, so. The new little kiddie pool is great.
That's great.
Yeah, it looked nice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I forgot to announce for the present person, on July 7th, the committee had a whole meeting, Fire Department Promotions Retirement Unit Citation Awards.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Mr. Corman?
Just, I just want to announce that the Public Safety Committee meeting that might have been held July 7th has been canceled.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Community Services Committee will meet on July 7th at 5:00 p.m. in the council conference room, and we will be discussing a joint inter-local agreement for community development and block grants. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utility Committee will be meeting on July 7th at 4:30, and we will be discussing the sewer, radio, panel relocation, and lift station improvements project bid award.
Okay.